Meeting will come to order. Good morning, good afternoon, good evening, wherever you are in your day, welcome to the city council. Roll call, let it show that all are present and accounted for, and please join me in the place of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As is common practice now, we are recording the meeting tonight. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Thank you. Presentations, need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Bo. Second?
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. On your agenda, you notice that we have staff committee and agency reports from our heads of the departments, and they're all here. Are there any questions? To the presenters of the presentations? Okay, I want to thank you. I know you guys are doing, it's a lot of work to put these things together, and we appreciate that, and my personal opinion is, is that we need to have more discussion about that. But thank you very much for what you did. All right, items for council consideration, the high school senior parents discussion.
Evening. My name is Megan Cady, and I am here with Nicole to represent the Efrida senior graduating class this year. Our parent organization is working to provide funding for the senior week celebration, so all of the events that go into that. I know Nicole was here a few weeks ago and presented a proposal to you. The proposal that is here for tonight is significantly changed, and so we want to talk through that and to let you know that in the two weeks between when she was here previously, and when we are returning tonight, we have had a change of mind. We have talked to multiple people, we have gotten some good counsel, and some of the things that we were asking for originally, we now don't feel like we want to request those, nor do we feel like they're appropriate to request. So we have restored, we have returned to simply invite you into partnering with us in areas that you may feel more comfortable, and where we would feel more comfortable asking for the support of the city and for city funds to do so. So we would like to request a waiver of the city permit for Rock Park. We prefer, we, Josh, Ray let us know that you guys had set aside the ERC if we were interested in that facility. I think for the students, an evening outside at Rock Park will be the preference for that. So we would like to continue on with the city proposal. And permitting for Rock Park will be in partnership with Petafin as well, so we'll have facilities there to use. And we would also like to request a police presence. The, the purpose behind this event is to provide a safe, encouraging, structured place for these students to gather and to keep that contained and safe as possible. So we would request a police presence if that could be provided by the city. And then certain things like insurance coverage and whatnot, reimbursement for that would be great. If it's not possible, we're okay with that as well. I will let you know that we've gotten, it's interesting even as the senior parent board, we've gotten a lot of pressure from the past group when they came to speak to us, and they were talking about the presidents there, the door is open, and we've gotten a lot of pressure to hold the line of what was asked for last year. And I think the original proposal, we just kind of looked through what was paid out to the senior parents and what was reimbursed to them, and so we put forward a proposal. But the more we think about it, and something that came to our attention that was really important to us as a team, was the conflict of interest. Last year's cash that was given, because we have a family member on the board, would have put a conflict of interest in that would have limited that student's ability to participate in the event itself. And that's a deal breaker for us. This has always been about the students. It's always been about providing something for this milestone as a celebration for them, and it's just not something we're even willing to push on if it would remove a student from participating. So we backed all of that back, and frankly, there was a number of us that just were not comfortable asking for city funds for that. So what we hope tonight is to give you something that you could partner with us in a way that you could support this event, because it is an important milestone in these students' careers as students and part of the Efrida School District. And so that's our hope, and in, in some ways, because of the pressure we have received from the previous team, and even from the community, people have said the door is open. Are you going for the money? And we're like, we're not comfortable. We're not comfortable anymore. Now that we understand the implications, especially with the conflict of interest, we're not comfortable. So hopefully, we can help reset a precedent or just reset a standing that would be easier for both the senior parent to feel like we could come to the city and the city to say, we're happy to support what you guys are doing, so.
Well, you kind of took the wind out of the sail, didn't you?
I know. Time is a beautiful thing, you know, and when you have good conversations, time is helpful.
Right.
We learned things we did not know.
And I think a big part of it is the, from our side, is how much we appreciate the effort that you're doing, because like you say, it's a, it's a fairly contentious discussion
Yeah.
among us and the community, and when you bring up the tax, you know, the legality of it and all that stuff, we want to be supportive, and I think we appreciate the fact that you're going at it from a little bit different perspective to where what we can be part of is a little more palatable that we can get into. The, one of the questions that I have is you talked about helping with the insurance. Do we have an amount?
I only have last year's fees, because we were getting, before we do an event, we wanted to make sure what was set. All of that has been going, so last year it was three hundred and seven dollars for the event insurance for that event in the same location.
Right. I think the, the things that you're asking is very doable. We have some communication that we have. I know I want to be able to sit down and talk to the police department or what, what that involves and how we can participate in that. Of course, I think we want to do that. We want to discuss with the, or at least I want to discuss with Public Works as far as the involvement and the prep and all that stuff, but it's a, but I think it's a very, a very worthwhile adventure, obviously, neighbor, and we want it to be able to, you know, we want to be able to work with that. So with that, I appreciate you coming in and telling us that, and I turn it over to council for questions or comments.
I'll start. So I'm the one who has a senior in high school this year. Many of you are going to be in similar shoes very soon. I think we'd all agree that giving just cash donations to anybody is difficult and probably not sustainable, and probably not what we're really trying to do. We've talked a little bit, I just recently met these two. So it's been really nice getting to know some of the other senior parents going through this process, and really just learning about the people who are organizing this. Steve Gray's are doing a lot of work. And so as another senior parent, I would say thank you, because I'm not participating in that, other than selling water. That's kind of fun, so. Um, I'd really, I agree, you know, it's not really sustainable to get the money. I think this is a segment of our, of our city that we don't really serve right now. We don't really have events for this group. We don't have a lot for just teenagers. I think that Josh, you're working really hard to get some diversity in the things that we're offering. And I'd really like to see some more things that we can host and do and participate in, or help run and promote to help get some, some things off the ground for teenagers. Most of us grew up here. There's not a lot to do when you're a teenager. We want kids to stay here. We want them to build families here, and I think we need to decide if we're a family community, we need to be sure that we're, we're appealing to every level within a family. Kids, when they have things to do, make better choices. They do better things. And making sure that they have some options and some things that we are supporting, I would really, I really think that's where we need to put our resources. I appreciate the work you guys have done and the creativity. I think last year was a challenge because it was the first time we'd heard it, but there, there's a lot of different things last year, but you guys came in with some different ideas and a different approach, and I think that's really helped with conversations. So I appreciate the work, and I'd really like to see us support these events and even host some of these events in a different way, even at the level that's very different than what we've ever done for events in the past.
I think it's a big deal to get it, get it integrated on an ongoing basis, but as early as possible. The more it comes into where it's coming through, you know, coordinated with Parks and Recs for use of the ERC, whether you're going to use it or not, integrated with the police so they know that that's going, makes it way easier. We don't get a lot of requests from, you know, I have an idea, I'd like some funding. We just don't get many, and it's by design, and it comes a little abrupt because we don't have that, that mentality in our heads. We're focusing on water, sewer, fire, that sort of stuff. But the more integrated you get, the easier and smoother it'll be, and the more we can do.
The concern that I had originally, and you took the wind, like the mayor said, you took the wind out of the sails, was because last year, the previous group, we told them that, that coming forward and asking for money at this date, late date, is difficult because we've already set the budget in. We, we told them to let you guys know that if you're going to do that, that you needed to do it before we get the budget in so that we can work on it. And so I was prepared to say, no, and then you, you guys came in with this, and I, I, I can support what, what you're doing.
I would echo the same thing. I appreciate your perspective of presenting proposals to help us facilitate, not entertain it. So, thank you.
I'll echo that and just say thank you for the reframing.
So, we can bring this to almost an end. What we'll need from you probably is a list, I mean, you probably already have that, of what you need and stuff like that, and unless the council has other ideas, I think our role behind that will be to deal with the heads of the departments, Josh Curt and all that, all that stuff. And we'll be able to come back, and it sounds like it's, it's a good deal, and we're willing to work with that. I don't see, as I look over at our attorney and she's shaking her head, that's always a good thing, and that means that we can, we can probably make this thing work. All right, great.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Biting for council action. A, we need to set a study session regarding the liaisons and subcommittees.
Yeah, we've had some discussions about who might be interested in representing the city in, in various arenas. We've operated in a vacuum for a long period of time, but we've kind of operated in a vacuum for a long period of time. I think it would be advantageous for our community to be represented in some different areas, and so the mayor and I have had pretty deep conversations about it, and, and we just want to try to set a date where we sit down and talk about the role of each liaison, so everybody's around the table and, and what that looks like, and what those responsibilities would be that you would be volunteering for before you volunteer for them. So just looking for a date that might work for everybody that we can have those discussions and talk about where we should put our resources and, and the areas of interest you have. Although I know a couple of you have already started and jumped in with both feet, definitely appreciate that, so.
We need to get the calendar out, or is everybody, do you want to do it before a council meeting, or do you want to pick another night? How do you want to attack this, knowing that there are now seven different dates that will or will not work?
I would propose an hour before a council meeting, if that works. So we want to shoot four. This is an odd month. So our next council meeting is not until February 5th. We'd like to set it for five o'clock on Wednesday, February 5th.
Anybody have a problem with that?
Nope.
No.
Okay. We need, do we know, vote on that, or are we just a done deal?
You should vote, because it's technically a special meeting.
Okay.
I would recommend a vote.
Okay, so I need a motion to set February 5th at 5:00 PM for a study session regarding liaisons and subcommittee.
So moved.
Thank you. And a second.
Pick somebody.
Katie, you're going to have to figure out where they're sitting now. You can't just hear it. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. R twenty-five oh one, contract with King County regarding disposal of bio solids at Boulder Creek.
Mayor, councilors, good evening. What's before you tonight is a renewal of a contract that we currently have with Boulder Park that is run by the King County wastewater division. What Boulder Park is, is a group of dry land weed farmers that have, whoever the, or are utilizing the process of spreading bio solids along their fields to, in lieu of using water fertilizers. The city utilizes, utilizes Boulder Park to dispose of their bio solids, which is a byproduct of our waste water treatment process. This is a, and legal has reviewed the contract, and it's pretty boilerplate to the one we had before. This is basically just a renewal, something we've already done. Now, recommends that you approve resolution twenty-five dash zero zero one.
I guess that would be the truest definition of recycling.
Where's the Boulder Park area, generally speaking? That's what I thought, it's up in the Just for clarification, where does King County come into play?
They I'm stepping out on a limb a little bit here. I, what I'm going to guess is that King County needed someplace to get rid of their bio solids, and through research and development, the I think that was created.
Okay.
King County has chosen to manage it.
Okay. Just trying to piece together the, the puzzle. I remember was that this was where the wastewater treatment leftovers went, right? So they using, they use our wastewater plant, or is this an independent drop?
It, it's independent property, basically. The King County manages the program.
Okay. I got it.
And then they, when the bio solids are hauled there, there's, there's they're spread out on, on the dry land and tilled in, and rebuild that.
Okay.
Are there other communities that are involved with that? Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Need a motion to accept R twenty-five oh one, the contract with King County regarding the bio solids.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Twenty-five oh two, authorizing the contract to utilize the LGIP for city investments.
Good evening, mayor and council. That is a renewal of a reservation, authorizing the investment of monies in the investment pool, as well as designating an authorized individual to authorize the amendments, changes, and alterations to our city account. So this LGIP was started in nineteen eighty-six, and City Efrida started investing in it in nineteen eighty-eight. We have been very happy with the, our access and our rate of return. We're able to access those invested dollars within twenty-four hours, which is very nice. With the change of personnel, it's time to update and verify appropriate individuals have access to these accounts and that are able to conduct the city's business without operation. So what this adoption would do is assign the city administrator as authorized individual, not Ray Towery. It would just be the city administrator, because that's one of the things we're having issues with, is Wes Craigow was authorized. It wasn't the city administrator, so we're wanting to take out that language, as well as add finance director as one of the lower officers. So staff recommends the motion to adopt resolution twenty-five oh two, as proposed.
Okay, questions? Need a motion, as stated, we need a, a motion to authorize the city investment.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second?
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Twenty-five oh three, authorizing interlocal agreement with the Grant County Public Works.
Again, mayor and councilors, thank you. What's before you is a proposed interlocal agreement between the city of Efrida and Grant County Public Works that will allow the city of Efrida to piggyback on purchases agreements, the county contracts that the county makes, and it'll allow the city to purchase surplus equipment from the county, and it will also, in a time of emergency, it's, we already have an interlocal agreement in place to help with the possibility of personnel and equipment. It allows us to make a step get made faster with using county resources without having to go, make a negotiation, because agreement covers that. The staff would like to recommend that you approve resolution twenty-five dash zero three, as presented.
Okay. And drop, questions?
I think things like this are, you know, they're minor housekeeping items, but they can become major hurdles amidst a crisis. So as we've seen in other, other parts of the country recently, you want to have your ducks in a row before things hit.
Just, just as, I guess, an example of the benefit of this, is that the, the county they utilize rock bricks. Basic scrap price. And they have a lot of gear serviced, well, to them, was, it was at the end of its life. Probably save close to ten thousand dollars, but doing what we did.
Yeah. Any else? Need a motion to accept R twenty-five oh three, the interlocal agreement with Grant County Public Works.
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Twenty-five oh four, the contract with ClearGov software.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
So I hope this is not a surprise to you. We, I'm asking for council on, or action for a contract with ClearGov bicycle management software. As we discussed in our council retreat, it's to assist with transparency, and I don't have twenty-eight years of experience, as Leslie did. But this will just help make that transition a little bit smoother. The two modules we've chosen is transparency and operational budgeting. Operational budgeting has a, is a module that helps with forecasting, speaking forecast for the future with that module, and then transparency is, really, it makes graphs, and it just takes all of our data from our current finance software, Tyler. It takes it and will make it a little bit more digestible for the public. So staff recommends motion to adopt resolution twenty-five oh four for ClearGov bicycle management software contract.
All right. Need a motion to accept twenty-five oh four, the ClearGov software.
So moved.
Thanks, Matt. Second?
Second.
Oh, tired out, Katie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Twenty-five oh six, contract with Civic Plus.
Hello, mayor and councilors. So we are looking to rebrand the city, and so with that, we're looking to update our current website that we have. Our website is currently through revise. Our contract with them ended at the end of twenty twenty-four, so we were up for this either way. We were also looking to add a mobile app that would coincide hand in hand with the website for easier access, like a lot of mobile apps are today. We put out a bid and received two bids back, one of which is from Civic Plus. We are currently already in a contract with Civic Plus for Parks and Rec, so we already have a relationship with them. We already kind of know the company with a little bit of knowledge. And they are able to do both the website and the app, so they can do it all in one umbrella, it gets really simple. And then we also had Apptigie, which is another awesome company, but they could only offer us an app, so then we would have to then go find another company again, and then, you know, do the whole thing. So upon further review of both of them, we staff recommend Civic Plus, because we do already have a relationship. It'll be a much easier migration with it, and we won't have to go find yet another company to help fill that gap.
All right. Thanks, Katie. Need a motion for R twenty-five oh six, a contract with Civic Plus.
So moved. Second.
We just start signing up for this. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Going to go to the other side of the house. R twenty-five oh eight, contract with Skyhawks.
Mayor and council, so this contract is essentially, it's very similar to how we set up our recreation instructors. So we set them up on a professional services agreement. Skyhawk Sports basically is an organization that creates kind of that buffer. They come in and help parks and recreation agencies look at, you know, what programs you're offering, where you guys need more programming, where you guys need help with, blah, blah, blah. And we're partnering with them to offer right now programs for ages two to five, and then we're hoping to partner with them to offer, you know, more programs. They, particularly, they're mainly for ages one and a half up to twelve. So this, this would essentially partner with them. They run the program, they bring the equipment, they bring the staff, and then we just do the registration, and then we can both do marketing and things like that, so. So yeah. Staff recommendation is to adopt resolution twenty-five oh eight, as stated.
Thanks, Josh. Need a motion to accept twenty-five oh eight, contract with Skyhawks.
So moved.
So moved. Any question? Second?
Second.
Thanks, Matt. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Twenty-five oh nine, Lincoln County Conservation District interlocal agreement.
Mayor and council, what you have before you is a resolution to hopefully have council approve an interlocal agreement with the city and the Lincoln County Conservation District. They have a consultant Landau, Landau Associates that has done work with them, but this work would have them working with our state legislators to try to get some laws reworded, so to encourage ASR, which is on for storage and recovery. Groundwater in the Columbia Basin isn't sustainable, the levels are dropping. Water rights are always an issue. Our state laws just aren't conducive to ASR as much as the state of Idaho and Oregon are, and so Columbia Basin Sustainable Water Coalition, which the city is a member of, and I'm a board member of this group, we meet monthly and, and are trying to address ways to have a sustainable local water source. And Landau Associates has agreed to do twenty thousand dollars of pro bono work. If the cities can ante up ten thousand dollars for this work, and then they will proceed with trying to ease the path so that we can do ASR, where ASR may come into use for the city of Efrida is with our retained water, wastewater treatment plant. We treat that water to drinking water standards. Right now, we're just putting it into the upper aquifer, which is not where our water rates are tied to. There is shortage where if we put that water into the lower water, where we actually pump the water rates are tied to, we can actually get credit for that water going into the ground, and then pull it out either in a different location or at a later time. So say in the winter, if we don't have a use for it, we put it in the ground, and then in the summer, we could get that back as local water, right? So, in any case. in any case, if this, if you have any questions, I can go into more detail, maybe when it's more than you care about already, but uh this is something that the city's old fellow Quincy and Moses Lake are are pursuing currently, and a lot of that is taking uh canal water and trying to treat that to drinking water standards, but also have an ASR component. And I've um at this point, I believe Othello's already committed money, twenty five hundred dollars to this cause, and I believe Wharton has taken it to their city council. Moses Lake and Quincy are also in the process to uh make sure that we can get this ten thousand dollars covered and and uh allow Lincoln County Conservation District to enter into agreement with Landau Associates.
So as uh I know it gets to be a bit of a gray area, but as an interlocal agreement, is this more visualized as a joint lobbying effort, or is it more a help with our individual caseloads? Is, and we're trying to get some of our previous rights we used to have back and figure out the right way to get.
Um, it's not really dealing with our existing water rights. Um, it is with the the Sustainable Water Coalition, I mean, it's every city has a different scenario, so we're all trying to look at how are we going to meet our water rights and our water demands in the future. Same thing with Moses Lake, well, PSR is an option that is a very popular um avenue that people are looking into and it is used quite a bit in Idaho and in Oregon. There's only a few cases, situations where ASR is being used in the state of Washington, but a lot of it is because laws just
Restrictor standards.
We took one for a summer taking canal water, filtered it, put it in the ground with the intention to pump it out and check how the aquifer levels um responded and how they recovered and if they sustain those. Uh, no problem with the Department of Ecology giving us approval to put it in, but when we like to take it out of the ground, the Department of Health said, whoa. Um, check all of our boxes. So
Gotcha.
Um, the it's just, there there's a different interpretations of the way the state is interpreting it is different than what the other states are. So trying to work with legislators to get the wording so that it is more conducive to using this as a tool because um any water we can put put down into the deep rock refers and try to sustain that and or hopefully repair the middle a little bit will be beneficial to the whole region.
Awesome.
So Othello, Efrida, the areas that we, are we all take out the same aquifer or are they different aquifers?
Um, so we'll get into a geology uh class here. The Columbia Basin has a very unique um geology down below. I mean, typically when you have volcanic activity, everyone pictures kind of the the volcanoes in Hawaii, where it's a big cone and everything flows out millions of years ago from about uh eleven to seventeen million years ago, we just have lava flows. And so if you go down to uh like the Columbia River, where's the rivers cut through those when the floods came through, we have this massive layers that anywhere from ten feet to a hundred and fifty feet thick where the whole region was just covered with back by lava flows. And in between those flows are your potential water break. So it's not every layer has water. Um, some of them have been mapped out. They are the water producing zones and yes, we are a deep well is intersects all those same ones. And whether it's in Moses Lake or here and or Othello, every place that uh they are all stacked on top of each other. Not necessarily everyone covers every, you know, cover the whole region, but uh uh yes, we are limited. Water doesn't go down very quickly. I mean, it's it's uh I have not seen any dating on like the city's deepest well, well, ten is eighteen hundred feet deep, but in Moses Lake, where we had several wells between a thousand and twelve hundred feet, that water's been seventeen to twenty thousand years since it's been on the surface. So every gallon you pump out, it's not getting recharged with waters that's seeping down through the through the soil. Um, the upper zones, when you've like our wastewater treatment plan, we put that water in the ground, it does soak down, it's down to the water table above the basalt player layers and um then flows away with that water, but uh to go to the, you know, underneath the salt, that water's now interconnected with what's on the surface.
So the water underneath, that's not necessarily a flow, it's a pocket.
Um, it does have, it is flowing generally from the northeast to the southwest. So, but it's it's not a river that has shores, you know, banks on both sides. It's more like thousands of feet wide, if not miles wide and really narrow and flowing through soil that's uh has some transversity.
So it could, I'm sorry. So it could just that flow could be water from the great north that just meanders through.
Yes, a lot of the layers that are a thousand feet deep here, daylight, by the time you get up to uh like Lake Roosevelt, Lake Roosevelt still has never been up there to actually see it, but it still has the granite. But the the salt flows are above layers of granite. And the granite is what was here before all those lava flows came. Granite doesn't have those intermittent layers where water can flow through it. It's generally just a solid rock through and through. So um the salt that's deep here, daylights, by the time you get to Lake Roosevelt areas.
So would it be difficult to measure the amount in the resi- the re- re- reservoirs down there because it would fluctuate with weather and all of this? Not so much.
The fluctuation has generally been a steady decline. I have not learned Moses Lake or I mean, Efrida is, I think, in a better situation, whereas get the Moses Lake, as soon as you cross the canal, you start getting into irrigated land that's irrigated off of groundwater. In the spring, when those farms all kick in, you'll have a well that drops over a hundred feet, even though it's not pumping any water, it just is in the cone of depression of all those irrigation. So to pick groundwater and that's effort of of work, uh much of the Odessa groundwater Schmidt, wherever where they're trying to expand river water to the east of the canal. Um, trying to get, I think it's about eighty seven thousand acres or hoping to get all groundwater wells and onto surface water.
So is there history behind this local agreement that we're talking about? They, you say that they're in Oregon and in Idaho about this. So they have a history of, I mean, this isn't a new outfit that's just just getting wound up about this. So they have a lot of data backing up what they do?
Well, I mean, anytime you put water in like what we did in Othello, put water in, just like when you kick on a well and you have a drawdown on a depression, put water in the ground, it mounds up. And then once you stop putting it in, if that mound goes down, you just hope you brought up surrounding water level up a bit. Like when you pump a well and you have the cone of depression taking down the whole area around that well. So um, there hasn't been enough water to be in, you know, instead of it seeping down through thousands of years, looking to this direct pipeline, watering into that aquifer and store it there, but then give credit to be able to pull that water out again. That is there. That op- that option's there. It's just not very feasible to do it because there are so many hoops. And right now you can't, you talk to the Department of Ecology, they're saying, oh, yeah, this is doable, everything's feasible. Talk to this Department of Health, they want to treat that as a whole new source of water. Um. And it goes back to Flint, Michigan, where they had a, they their water system was fed with river water. They came from a different source of river water. It was still drinkable, everything was fine. But the chemical makeup reacted differently with the piping and the lead uh joints in that piping to leach out um lead, which is not a good thing, but generally when you, they should have identified that and stopped the practice or tried to address it. They didn't for several years and that's where this, that the Flint, Michigan case became a big problem. So Department of Health, their job is to make sure that all your drinking is healthy. So, you know, they're probably being a little protective and making junk through all these hoops prior to using the water and testing it to see what you find.
So what we're doing tonight is we're entering into a professional service agreement with this outfit. What's their history?
The Landau Associates?
Yeah.
They have um they're an consultant just like uh Graham Osborne, but they do specialize in uh hydrogeology and water rights and things like that. And so they have been doing work with the Columbia Basin Sustainable uh Water Coalition with some, through some grants that they got. And they have been um provide, they've been working with our coalition and have provided, you know, expertise and guidance uh as far as putting together just everything, you know, what's our options? They've done some reports for the group. And in those reports, one of the things that the group has addressed is one way to um tool to keep us to try to maintain sustainable water supply is offer storage and recovery. I think we are the only city out of the ones that are talking, that we talked about that uh we actually have our clean water, a source of global water that's won't directly be used for global. Nobody has taken wastewater treatment or treated wastewater and injected it into a drinking water system, but the ASR by, once we've treated it, put it in the ground, it's now considered groundwater. And we are treating drinking water standards. There's nobody quite that's
We're doing a lot of recycling tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah. So to drop back, just, I'm sorry, I wandered into the weeds on on this, Sean, but and these guys that we're going into the service contract with, how long have they been around? I mean, have they got, I mean, this, what my point is, is that they're experts in what they do and they provide a long-term service for us as far as knowledge and and that kind of stuff.
Yes, they they are very well um first in the ASR probably, I mean, they do, they've had projects, they've been involved in stuff in Idaho and Oregon and stuff, so between they and them and Aspect, which I think Efrida has used Aspect a little bit, they're two of the companies that are specialize in groundwater stuff, which I think Aspect is a little bit more with the groundwater rights and
Right.
the well production
Yeah.
and whatnot, but um like has been very involved with the ASR.
Any other, any questions?
And then just as a technical matter, um, there are some amendments that need to be added to this agreement. I just provided it to Ray today. Uh, just to make sure that this interlocal agreement complies with the interlocal Cooperation Act. And they're just technical, like there's termination uh process and term um that the it has to be recorded or posted on the website and regarding budget.
Do you have an updated copy of that? Or do you think we passed out before you?
Question about it. Um, so what if all of those cities don't come like agree to do it and we don't get to the ten thousand mark?
Well, um, in my RCA, this says that there are eight, meaning eight thousand dollars. We're hoping that this is whole dinner in the agreement or it will be negotiated to land out, have to come back.
Is it critical enough issue that we? I mean, you're asking for two thousand four, is it a critical enough issue that we say two thousand up to a certain amount or something like that? Would that be a helpful thing to do? To grant some flexibility so that if you need to come up to make up a five hundred dollar difference or something, it would save some time and work? Or is that not realistic?
No. You can give the flexibility. I just went and then talked with Ray. I mean, there's five cities are looking to do it.
May not need it anyway.
Share and Moses Lake's a bigger city. I believe they're going, they were going to ask for some additional funds. Uh
Same.
Othello and Quincy are much more motivated. They have projects that are kind of already progressing, so.
Okay. Thank you.
You think this is doable then?
This is doable, I guess, if you wanted to give a little caveat to allow staff of the mayor to uh adjust the amount by us, you know,
Seems like
other options, the other cities come back and we have now eleven thousand dollars, we could be the first ones to back out by five hundred or more.
But we do have the option to adjust that down the road if necessary.
Yeah. Adjusting down, I don't think it's a problem if you wanted to be able to have if you wanted to be on record saying we have the ability to adjust that, that would provide some flexibility and potentially streamline the process a little bit.
If it's sounding probable, they're all going to come forward based on, and cover that in a likely way, then I don't, I don't know how necessarily, I guess I was just getting at. It sounds like a lot of work that you've done on this. It sounds like a lot of work that others have done on this. So I was trying to find some space to maybe not have to start over.
Sure. No, that's that's actually great forethought. I definitely appreciate you giving us, and it allows us to be a little more expeditious than coming back to you in a month or six weeks and asking, remember that one?
Start over.
Yeah. I would like to take a moment to answer your question, though. I think if you compare our situation with some other communities around us as far as water availability and water rights, we're sitting pretty good.
Okay.
That being said, we do have pumps in our wells that we are not using at a hundred percent capacity. Uh, and we did just revamp a well in order to deepen it because we were pulling water out faster to where that pump was cavitated. And I believe that is definitely a sign of the lowering of the effort.
Hmm.
So it's not an emergent issue to answer your question, but it is something where if we don't look ahead and and be prepared to address it and work towards it. Uh, it is something, and and we are having discussions amongst ourselves about uh, we do have water, the capability to tap into the canal and produce drinking water there, but that's a facility that we then have to build to pull that water out, filter it, sanitize it, and then put it into our drinking water system. But those are things that we're trying to look ahead. Again, our goal is to, is to be set for fifty years.
Hmm.
We're good now for twenty to thirty. We feel very comfortable in that, but we do want, we're trying to get to that fifty year mark.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question on the two thousand dollar commitment. Does that come out of our water fund then? So that's, it's not a general fund item. It's going to be a which we're sitting okay, I'm assuming in the water fund, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions, tweaks? With the addition of Anna's changes, we need a motion to accept the Lincoln County Conservation District Interlocal Agreement.
So move.
Second.
Thanks, Matt. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move. Twenty five ten, the Grant County Health District Interlocal Agreement.
Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, good evening. Thank you again for for your time. Uh. Back in August of uh of this last year, the lovely Ms. Teresa Atkinson appeared before us and presented uh on the work of the Grant County Health District. Uh, and Ray forgot to bring the agreement back in front of you uh for your approval after that date. So um, in front of you is the agreement. It's a budgeted item. You did budget for it. We've talked about it on a couple of occasions since then. So it is a house cleaning or housekeeping for the most part. We have no negative effects on the budget. So we're asking that you would please approve resolution zero one zero authorizing the interlocal agreement with the Grant County Health District. Um, and Anna has something she'd like to add.
And before you take that action to approve that resolution, because our firm represents both the Grant County Health District as well as the city of Efrida, there is a conflict waiver that the council would need to approve by motion first before um approving the resolution. And that again, it has the details of that that conflict, but just acknowledging that we do represent.
Okay. Need, before we do the ten motion, we need a motion to recognize the conflict of interest?
To sign the conflict waiver.
Alright. You got that, Katie? Alright. Need that motion. So move.
Oh.
Oh, I'll stop all second. You can put, you can put whoever down there got ahead of me.
Working second to large.
One who didn't, but I'll do it. Film. I was gonna, but it was surround sound down here.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And with that, need a motion to accept the Grant County Health District Interlocal Agreement.
So moved.
That was bold. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So move. Were we going to go into an executive session tonight? I believe we were.
Yes, we would like to have a quick uh fifteen minute executive session. Awesome.
To discuss.
Um, litigation, potential litigation.
There we go. All right.
Real quick, before we start, um uh we've, as council knows, we've started doing some some additional in-house staff trainings in early mornings, early morning hours. Um, we've had the opportunity to partner with the Grant County Sheriff's Office on a training coming up in March. Uh, the trainer who comes in is works internationally, um, works with large Fortune five hundred companies, large governments, small governments. Um, one of the things that he does is training for boards and councils, and it's an opportunity for us to have him here. We can uh utilize some economies of scale perhaps, uh, if the council would be interested in that. It would have to be uh Thursday evening, March twentieth. I've seen him do this, been through this with him on a couple of occasions. He's exceptional. Uh, he was just a keynote speaker for WASPIC last March, I believe it was last spring, Eric, the senior speaker. So uh if the council is open to that, I spoke with Mr. Rabner today and he's more than happy to speak with us for a fee, of course. So we had a, we discussed topic of of um he calls rules of engagement. How do people have constructive conversations? How do you engage each other in discussion? How do you do that manner which is respectful? And how do you do that in a manner which which accomplishes rules you set out for? So very well done.
You said the twentieth?
Twentieth, yeah.
Yeah. Great. Probably you said the evening?
Morning?
Uh, evening. He'd be, he has an engagement on Wednesday, so he'd be coming in Thursday morning. Well, Thursday afternoon, work with us Saturday evening, and then do the all day on Friday.
Okay. We'll let you play with your calendar to get that thing in there. Anything else, Ray? All right, we're going to take a fifteen minute executive session for litigation and potential litigation. The rest of the house is excused.
They're going to have their papers.